Okay, well, let's call this meeting of the Letherton Village Planning Commission for Tuesday, February 16th. Let's call to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, move on to roll call.
Roll call, Chair Pietrowski.
Here, calling in from my home in Letherton Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
Vice Chair Hammond. Secretary Thompson.
Here, calling in from Ian Arbor, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Board Member Fobbs.
Present, calling in from Letherton Village, Oakland County.
Board Member Julieta. Board Member Cantor.
Here, calling in from Letherton Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Board Member Stansberry.
Present, calling in from Letherton Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Hey, thank you. Before we proceed, we'll entertain a motion to excuse Commissioners Hudaueza and Jason Hammond.
Second.
Those in favor? Roll call.
Roll call, Chair Pietrowski.
Yes.
Secretary Thompson.
Yes.
Board Member Fobbs.
Aye.
Board Member Cantor.
Yes.
And Board Member Stansberry.
Aye.
Motion carried to excuse Member Charo Julieta and Jason Hammond from this meeting.
So we will move on to approval of the agenda. If nobody has any objections or sees any reason to make any adjustments, we'll entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Those in favor? Roll call.
Board Member Fobbs.
Aye.
Board Member Cantor.
Yes.
Chair Pietrowski.
Yes.
Board Member Stansberry.
Aye.
And Board Member Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carried to approve the agenda.
Okay, we'll move on to approval of the meeting minutes for our regular meeting of January 19th, 2021. If there are no comments or corrections that need to be made, we will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as it's written.
Minutes.
Yep, sorry, the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from January 19th, 2021.
Second.
Those in favor? Roll call.
Board Member Cantor.
Yes.
Chair Pietrowski.
Yes.
Board Member Stansberry.
Aye.
Board Member Thompson.
Yes.
And Board Member Fobbs.
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the minutes from January 19th, 2021.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to public comment. At this time, we'll entertain comments from the public for any items that are not listed on the agenda this evening.
There are no attendees in the public venue.
Okay, that said, we'll move on then to new business, starting with our comprehensive plan working draft discussion.
All right. Let's see, okay, so I can share, oh, I can't share my screen. I was gonna kind of walk through the working draft that we submitted to you on Friday. I'd kind of, it's not the final, final version, but we're close to the final version. So I wanted to get some feedback from you all on the different components and then on the implementation strategies to see if there's anything else that you want to make sure we include, particularly in the implementation section of that.
You can share now if you'd like.
Yeah, there we go. Okay, so I'm gonna go. So we've got, all the major components are in here. Some of this you've seen, all the introduction, the settings, the demographics, we've been kind of over this before. Tied it up a little bit and added those things into the table of contents. The existing land use section, I think you've seen that pretty much before as well, the community facilities. We've updated some of the information on transportation, included the summary of the public input that we had that starts with the stakeholder meeting that we had back in August of 2019, if you can believe it was that long ago, along with the summary from our open house, our virtual open house that we had last May because of the pandemic. We've talked about the goals and objectives. It's been a while since we had that conversation, but those were included in here in the format of, you know, what, what do we want? What is our vision? And then why do we want those things? Just to help people understand as they're reading this, why things are important, where certain goals may be applicable, and then what other obstacles or things that we should be considering related to those, those elements. So those are included in here as well. We do have the section on mixed use, or sorry, on future land use, along with the future land use map, and we hadn't identified any changes. That's another point, just to clarify with the planning commission, that there aren't any areas that you feel need to be changed.
Jill, do we need to, do we need to put the new overlay district in there?
This is for just the future land use. So this is, I should back up, that's a good, a good question. So the future land use map is just the, the guiding principles for our vision for the future. So this helps us with policy decisions, with land use related decisions. The zoning ordinance is the legal framework by which we do that. So the, the overlay that we just did, that we just had adopted last week, is a zoning amendment. So that would be reflected on the zoning map and not necessarily in the future land use map. We have a chapter on resiliency and sustainability, and I don't remember if we've talked about this before or not, but this chapter does get into some discussions to sort of set the stage for future efforts related to sustainability and resiliency, in particular with respect to climate change issues, as well as identifying potential vulnerable members of the community that we might need to be aware of, and then also thinking about the other kinds of outreach that might need to be taken, and some of the things that are associated with those climate change issues, along with other issues related to, for example, the pandemic. So how does a community respond to shocks that come from the X, from the outside? So there could be economic shocks, it could be storm or weather related shocks, or they could be, as we've seen, public health type shocks. This sort of sets the stage to plan for that in the future. So how are we going to deal with the next pandemic or the next health related issue? What systems worked while we were going through this and what need to be improved so that the next time we have something happen, we're able to, to better attend to the needs of our residents and business owners? I think we've all learned a lot over the last year with respect to that, but there's other issues too. We did look at housing, we looked at aging in place, and these are some of the things that we've talked about in the past. We also introduced the idea of neighborhoods in this master plan. So it's not really something that we talked about before, but it became rather apparent as we looked at a map, as you see here on page 61. And if you'll excuse me for one second, my dog is going to bark if I don't let him out, so. Okay, sorry about that. So the idea of creating, you know, essentially, we have these, these geographic boundaries that are formed by the roadways. We, we already know that this community is divided into north and south and east and west using Southfield and 696 as sort of our, our boundary points. But what happens if we turn those into an asset? And we think about it instead of thinking of how those, those roadways divide the community of how within each community, each neighborhood, we can strengthen those neighborhoods and use them to better communicate what needs to, what the city needs to share. So whether it's, you know, planning and zoning related, maybe public hearing related, something's happening near a certain neighborhood, or whether a certain neighborhood has needs that aren't being met, that they're able to come to the city and say, we are in the southwest neighborhood and we would like to see, we can use the example of Golden Gate Park. That was approved several years ago, but if there was another issue that, that arose there, that they would be able to have a voice and they would know who to contact. Like we just were talking about with the resiliency idea, when we have health related emergencies or storm related emergencies, it's important that the community can be reached. It's important that the city gets messaging out to folks. And so whether that's then through an organized captain, if you will, for southwest neighborhood or southeast neighborhood, that there are people in place that know who their neighbors are that might be affected, and they're going to be more in touch with those folks than, than we could be at City Hall. I think it also helps support that idea of, of community and neighborhood. We know that frequently, the only time we ever hear from folks in the community is when something is literally happening down the street in front, in front of where they live. You know, sometimes we can, we can say that they're NIMBYs, not in my backyard folks, but if we can turn that around, we recognize that that's where people are affected is when it affects their neighborhood, and that's when they become aware. So if we can get on the front end of that and help people recognize those issues, and then also bring those people together to say, but at the end of the day, we're all residents of Letherton Village. And as we know from the public feedback that we've gotten through this process and in other processes, we had the recreation plan input as well. We know people are very proud of being from Letherton Village. We know people really like living in Letherton Village. They really like their neighbors, and they care about that. And so using this, this, that idea to really expand on it and tap into the strength of that. And so that's what this section is trying to do. The commercial corridors, really, this should be commercial corridors in downtown, because we tend to think of that. We don't tend to think of downtown as being the commercial quarter, but in effect it is, and that's part of the DDA. So we have the summary of the market study in here, as well as some other recommendations from that. And then some of the specifics on the redevelopment concept for the Village Center. So I think we talked about this redevelopment concept in terms of maybe minimizing or lowering the intensity of some of that development at the edges and thinking that maybe that might be a easier point of transition from current development into redevelopment. And so we, I know we've talked about some of these images as well. We also had the redevelopment site that's south of 696 on Southfield Road, and we talked about some of the concepts for that. And the House in the Woods. Now, I know that this did have a look from council, and, and I know, and maybe Bruce can talk about that shortly, and we can discuss there, some of the comments that we heard from council and the direction that council's going with that site. And then the school itself, and so some of the components that might be associated with redevelopment. We've updated the complete streets section of the master plan and further incorporated the neighborhood concept into that complete streets to make sure that each neighborhood is served with an ability to get around, not with, not only with their car, but also non-motorized transportation, so walking and cycling. So we have that. Oh, we also do have in here a discussion of particularly the, the bus stop. So the bus stop outside of City Hall is really very nice. It's got a very nice concrete pad. You can see in the back, it's got a sidewalk that leads to the public sidewalk. It's got a shelter. It's set back from the roadway, and that's contrasted with this one in the lower image. That is really a challenge, I think, to put it, to put it politely, for anybody to stand out there and wait for a bus is definitely something that needs improvement. And so we've recommended some of those things in here as an ongoing action strategy to consider. Also putting in some of the discussion about Southfield Road as it is, as it was last time, we recognized that that's an ongoing project. It continues to be an ongoing project. But putting in here the idea of their preferred alternative and some of the comments with respect to pedestrian crossings, which we think are very important to keep in the plan. And then on the pages that follow, we have the implementation matrices. We break these down into providing a lead body, the timeframe, potential funding sources and supporting partners, and then identified some of what those funding sources might be. And then break those down further into zoning action items. So those will typically be things that would be initiated with planning commission, but then advocacy items. So there might be things that involve education or encouragement. Maybe we encourage people to do certain things. It's not really a zoning requirement, but we want to advocate for those types of things. Capital improvement action items, things that require an outlay of capital. We want to make sure that we pull those out in a separate category so we don't lose track of those and then any other items that we have. And so you'll see on the pages that follow that they're grouped by the goal, and many of these come from the last master plan that we did. Some of those were ongoing items that we continue to keep in here, the ones that we had talked about way back last, probably almost a year ago, February or March, that were completed. We didn't add those in, and then added in a couple of new ones as well. So that is the basic overview of the organization and the things that you probably haven't seen. So I'm interested to hear your thoughts on that.
Thank you, Jill. I, first off, every time I think we're faced with this, it's, it's like, it feels like just a huge amount of information. And so to know where to dig in and start can be a challenge by itself. If someone or if anyone has something they would like to say or something that jumped out at them, maybe we start with that. If not, I would.
Mark, I can jump in.
Yep, sure.
So one of the things I was thinking about, I remember we had a neighborhoods conversation with the concepts of neighborhoods. I was disappointed because my neighborhood, I think, I was the only one that filled out a survey. So it was pretty frustrating. And in some of my work across the state and in other municipalities, one of the things I was thinking about with that neighborhoods, to your point, Jill, about kind of having that captain. It's almost like when you're looking at like a city, they have NPCs, you know, neighborhood planning councils. It's almost like that, but on a smaller scale. And when I've seen it successful doing some projects, it's really happens where we actually will do a cookout. Intentionally, a direct mail, doesn't cost much because you already know how many houses and this and this, usually use some discounts with our mailers are going out and being very intentional about rallying the neighborhood, because I think that that's actually going to help with our future planning. I think the strength of our future planning relies on residents feeling like they collectively own what's happening, as opposed to just, you know, leaders that, you know, are splattered here and there, because there's probably a lot of great thought leaders, but we just don't have access to them. And so one of the concepts I thought from the implementation, just thinking about cause, that's actually pretty cheap. It winds up by checking off the box. Last time we talked about kind of being connected, but also highlighting those captains, or at least getting groups of people together, because I always say, look, if I'm in the southwest region, meet at Letherton Village, you know, City Hall, and we're gonna have a cookout for you guys. We really want to get to know you all, and, you know, we really want to understand, it's just a little bit different of doing the, the virtual, but a little bit more targeted on those specific neighborhoods to see how that actually coordinates. I think that might work well. I know we're a small village, so when I'm dealing with large, large neighborhoods, it's a little easier because you're doing, you have capacity there. But I, I think it's actually something that might be explored.
Yeah, and I'll, and I'll add on to that, that, you know, I've been in Letherton Village since 1992, and there's been a significant change in, at least from my perspective, in terms of the dynamics within neighbors and how they reach out to each other. And part of that might be local, because I, I happen to, in my location, which is the south end, I guess, of the, the northwest region, we had a pretty, pretty strong knit block party group for a time, and it was really driven by a couple of individuals who, who have retired and moved from, from the neighborhood to go on and do other things. But those catalyst people who have the availability and have the energy are, and kind of fit that category as a captain, are, are great for bringing people together, might be a bit more challenging to do it on a, in a larger, in a larger manner than, than say, block by block. There's also maybe some challenges with the dynamics of, I, I see the, the five areas there, and I see three as being pretty strongly based on the division of the roadways, and maybe a little bit less strong on the northwest, in the, the northwest corner of it because of the size and whatnot, but but I think there's some good thoughts there as far as maybe revitalizing that, that energy, which I, I've sensed has drifted, drifted away since pretty much 2008 with, with the economic crisis at that time, so. But it's an energy that, and maybe it's just where I'm at in my life and where my family is in, in its stage, but, but I think it's something that is worthwhile to reinvigorate.
Yeah, Mark, I remember years ago, I, I adopted myself on the, what is it, right behind City Hall, that neighborhood, and they would block off Letherton Boulevard, police would come, and it was a time to get together with neighbors, and you just met neighbors. Oh, I didn't know you had a kid the same age as my kid. Oh, you go this. And, and, and yes, it can be a little bit more prescriptive. I know it's a bad word, but a little bit more prescriptive in terms of understanding what a neighborhood, you know, wants and kind of having them own that. But it's also just a good time for neighbors to get to know each other, because I think that's where the dialogue begins.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And to have something structured then breaks down the, hopefully breaks down the, the barriers of, of, you know, I'm in my own world and, and creates a broader, maybe sense of community.
And then I did have a part two with the neighborhoods. By splitting up into sub neighborhoods, you, and this is just a byproduct of neighborhoods. When you talk about real estate, housing stock, valuations, real estate agents, a lot of times that can become a detriment. And so we would have to probably think about that from an offensive standpoint, because, oh, you live in this, in this corridor, and those houses, and that neighborhood, it's not that strong, this and this. It, it does come up. You know, right now, people just say Letherton Village as a unit. Well, and probably quietly, they probably do break it down into different pieces, north of the highway, south of the highway, et cetera. But we would just have to really think about that and be pretty strategic and intentional to not, not, to make sure that there's not a segmentation in a negative sense with negative connotations.
I think that's a really great point, and I think even knowing what those perceptions are gives you the ability to make changes. So what is it about that neighborhood? You know, why do people feel that way? Is it, you know, are they, are those residents missing something? Are they not? Do they not, I, when you were talking about the closing off the street, you know, I was, I was looking at the map, and there's a couple neighborhoods that don't have a public gathering space, but they sure all have streets. So, you know, they could just decide that one of those is going to be the place where they have their block parties, and that would be, you know, where they have that. If that's all that's available, it's at least something. And so this helps you sort of think about the things that create a neighborhood and see if there's a way that we can provide that for all the neighborhoods as much as we can on an equitable basis.
Like Jill just says, anecdotal example, I know the old Annie Letherton house, not her main one, but the, she had a smaller house in the southeast corner. That would be a great mini park. It would be a great gathering place for that whole neighborhood. Because, you know, then you don't have to shut down the street. It's literally just, it's just sitting there doing nothing. It's just open land. And so little things like that, that's not, you know, lawn mowed, and, and we have like some balloons and, and everybody meets there. Great. So I'm sure that every neighborhood, or I call it sub neighborhood, because I consider Letherton Village almost too small to have like a, but anyways, I think that everybody probably has some ideas that might be simple, not expensive from a budgetary standpoint, but still connected. Because I think that the valuation of, and again, I live in, full disclaimer, I live in the southeast corner. The, the valuation of the southeast corner with a, a small park there actually improves the, the housing value.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, we have any other thoughts?
I have a question on what was just said. So are we suggesting to have some kind of like neighborhood captains that? I guess that's my question. So like, are we suggesting neighborhood captains? And what, what does that look like? And what are their exact?
Well, that's a future implementation item. So that's one of the things, and I think it's even, it's on the housing. It's in the housing implementation on page 88 under advocacy. So it's assist neighborhoods with a framework for building associations. So it's something that would be determined by the city. But the idea would be to create something that is, that gives the neighborhoods a voice without pitting one neighborhood against another. We were kind of almost talking about that. But also allowing them all to come together maybe once a year at City Hall. So we recognize, you know, we all are Letherton villagers, and then we also have this other identity as part of my neighborhood. But that really can give also, you know, I kind of have this, I, this vision of like, you know, the recreation committee, the planning commission, like everybody, it's like a fair, like everybody's got their volunteer thing, and then you've got the neighborhoods that come through, and they can kind of find out what's going on and then take that back, and that there would be some sort of a mechanism then for ongoing communication. So maybe it's every year, somebody just offers to be the, the captain, if you will. There's probably all kinds of resources we could find as a template. Like, I don't think that the city's gonna have to start this from scratch. Like, I'm sure we can find ways to do it that other communities have used and that have worked. And that's part of the next step about creating that.
Yeah, Jill, I was gonna say, I, I see it as a way to bidirectionally communicate, right? Because we have so many different things and ordinances and changes. We have protected wetlands, so we deal with coyote, and I know where they live. Um, we we have protected wetlands, so we deal with coyote and I know where they live. You know, I see five of them, not just one, and 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 so a lot of neighbors are dealing with some of uh, local, hyper-localized issues. Um, as well as actually being able to assimilate information when we talk about roads or infrastructure or upgrades in general. Um, I think that that's actually a positive to bidirectionally learn.
And even thinking it from a a commercial standpoint, like. You know, especially the south, south of six ninety-six, so southeast and southwest, you know, if you look at the map. We know we don't have a lot of restaurants down there, like what are those, what are the residents down there need? It's very difficult for anybody to get north of six ninety-six. And I don't know how often people do walk that area. Um, I don't know that I've, I notice it very often, but you all are there more than I am, but um.
Oh, we're, we're, we walk, I mean, yeah, we uh, there's a lot of folks that walk there. Um, and again, this is all anecdotal, which I guess kind of goes without saying. Yeah, they would, they would love to be able to have uh, some type of food place. Um, now, you know, right now it was pizza, but our 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 neighborhood wasn't really a pizza type place. And so, you know, it's one of those things that I think is actually very informative, but we want to make sure that we have a community engagement. Uh, to really inform that process of what they would like to imagine.
Right, exactly, exactly, so that when businesses or interested businesses or when the DDA. Says they want to go out and recruit businesses, they know, like, oh, I. They're out and about, this, this sounds exactly like what the folks in southeast neighborhood were talking about. Let's find out if they'd be interested in opening up another location here. Um, so that you've got that awareness of what we really need and you're able to more target. Um, those types of uses to fit in.
And and I'm hoping on a positive note, as opposed to just the negative, I remember years ago, it was a car wash. Uh, that there was uh, going to be placed over there, uh, this is years and years ago. And I remember the the community rallied and said, no, we don't want a car wash, we think it's gonna decrease home values. I'm I'm hoping and I'm, I'm optimistic that it's also gonna be about positive future planning. So that's kind of the whole point of this discussion, um, as opposed to just, well, I don't want this and. And it always has a negative, well, not always, but it could have a negative connotation. That's not what I'm looking for and hoping for.
Exactly, this, this idea is trying to get ahead of all of that. I mean, you'll always, I'm sure, get the folks that aren't happy with change, but. Um, if you can at least get people engaged in the the process. Um, and recognize and prepare them, like, things are going to change, let's talk about how things are gonna change. And then when they do change, people aren't completely taken aback by it. That's sort of the hope.
I was gonna say, the challenges with location go beyond such, beyond the neighborhoods in that, in that case, in terms of your commercial activity. And um, being strategic and it is an example when we were reviewing and. Um, recommended approval of the, on the southwest side, the gas station going in. And that, that was done with a recognition of, here's a use that has some potential. Um, I don't know, some community amenities there as well, beyond just gasoline, but but also recognizing the fact that. That position worked from a commercial standpoint and its location. I think business owners are are making those same choices, so it's, it's, it's sometimes challenging. While we might want something in a particular spot, it might not from a business sense, based on vehicular traffic. Um, provide what they need and that's, that's really the one, one of the challenges, once you start slicing and dicing up. Land and property with with how it's going to get used.
I think that is a good example of a gas station, because I remember when we first talked to them, that I thought, oh. Nobody is gonna want this, everybody's gonna freak out when they hear it's a gas station, and then. You know, we had the public hearing, we had folks that came out from that neighborhood. And they were concerned, but they asked really good questions and there was a really good dialogue, remember, between. The gas station, the developer and what he was gonna provide and hopefully try to provide in the convenience section of the store. To really meet the needs of the residents and he kind, I mean, unfortunately, uh, hasn't been developed that way yet.
Right, we don't know.
But it, you know, it made, it, I appreciated the fact that. Um, those residents knew that. That they knew what they wanted and they were, they knew what they were concerned about. They expressed their concerns and they said what they wanted and they were able to, you know, get some of that, I mean. Hopefully would be built that way, but. Yeah, so that.
Yep, all we can do is 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 put, try to put our best foot forward there and um. And encourage the uh, you know, the the type of businesses and the the vision of what those businesses. Um, should be in order to best serve our community and provide an attractive place along the corridor.
Jill, you you, you mentioned that um, the property where the mansion used to be had been discussed at city council.
Yes.
What was it that changed from the discussion with planning commission?
Well, I wasn't actually at that meeting, so maybe uh, if Bruce wants to chime in on what some of the feedback was.
Yeah, I mean, just basically the, the, the city is just been trying to. You know, at least the three years that I've been on council and for much longer have been, it's been spinning in circles about what to do with the property. Um, and you know, any direction that we've tried to take, there's been just one stumbling block after another and and we just. Basically just decided to try to sell the property. We had, we had an offer in for the property. Um, you know, it was a very low offer, but that kind of got us moving towards uh. Trying to sell the property and uh, we've, we've hired a Realtor and uh. I believe that that arrangement will be formalized at the February um, council meeting next week.
Okay.
Is there any idea that that concept in the master plan might be something that would be considered?
I don't think council liked it that much.
Yeah, there wasn't a lot of, um, there was some disinterest in the level of density. How's that for?
Uh, when I looked at it, I thought, you know, just the. Because of what is going on around in terms of the rest of the neighborhood, how do you fit something in that increases density? That doesn't stand out as, um, you know. Ha- have too much strength of its own thing, being something different than everything around it. Um, I guess would be the way I would put it.
But it did have that common space in the back for all those neighbors to enjoy.
Oh, go ahead, I was.
Just gonna say, when I look at the plan, I just, I I I almost wish there was a little bit more. Forward thinking when the property was divided to begin with, because I think the circle being centered in the center. Just lends itself to maybe one resolving it with a couple more houses without. You know, you still have the issue of what do you do with the centerpiece? But it, that that balance just, to me, speaks a little bit more strongly of thoughtfulness towards. You know, maybe a future, a future plan. It wouldn't change too much, I think, but um. We do have that interesting keyhole kind of shape remaining.
Uh, second question, I guess, is a more maybe a Suzie question. In the, in this, in the plan itself, where it shows some of the things that need to be improved, that the alternative funding sources. Uh, for example, the bus stop, uh, shit. Are those things, I think, uh, the city pays for it or does we have to work with the county or simple or smart? I forgot what it's called. Something, sorry.
That's all right, I I still knew what you were talking about, um. Yes, to both of those, I mean, really, I mean, we'd have to, it's mostly working with smart. Um, and I think Jill reached out to someone from smart like a hundred years ago. Um, when we first started talking about this, so I mean, yes, we would have to work with smart, um. You know, obviously because it's a, a county road, we'd have to work with the county on that. Um, and, you know, it would be, I would imagine that to be a DDA-driven improvement. And I, it's something that I've, um, I've even spoken to our, our, the city's engineer about, like, how, how do we? Help me, help me estimate what it would cost to make these kind of improvements and. Um, I think that might have been when Jill was like, yo, slowly roll and uh, let's talk to smart first and see if they have any. Um, funding and standards that we need to talk about first, but um. I mean, we, yeah, the short answer is yes, we'd have to partner with some other.
Only reason I use, I use that as an example, because smart is in the process of updating. All of the, I guess, the bus stop shelters along Woodward. And they all know that, they all have solar panels and monitors on the inside. So when they take down an old one, maybe it's, it's, if this is still fairly decent shape. Or as they upgrade to the new ones, what do they do with the old ones until we're ready to deal with the expansion of Southwood Road, I guess?
Well, I don't want their old ones, I want the new ones. With the solar panels and all the bells and whistles, but um, you know, we have been talking to, we did talk to the road commission. Last month, um, about maybe some interim improvements that could be made before, I mean, the. Southfield Road reconstruction is, I mean, the current estimate is a hundred and thirty million dollars, so. It's uh.
Or more, or more importantly, at the earliest, they're saying nine years.
Right, that, or there's that wrinkle too, right? So we've started talking about these. Um, interim improvements, uh, including upgrading the drainage and ditch system. Removing those old culverts, improving that entire system. And I, you know, we even brought, we brought up at that point too, like, we need to do something about these bus stops, because just like that. Bus stop that Jill showed us, I, I mean, they're just straight up not safe, right? So how can we? And that's an equity issue, period, and and so how do we, how do we address those issues and improve? Improve the experience for our residents and riders in general of the system. So I mean, there's, there's that component and, you know, additionally with the crosswalks, I mean, there's a lot of different moving parts, but. Um, I'm glad to know that they're making improvements to Woodward, because now we can start harassing them a little bit more too.
So did the, the, the nice bus stop, which is right out in front of city hall, where we probably had control over. Maybe a little bit better control over because of um, um redevelopment of the landscape and sidewalks that have occurred over. You know, over the years in that location, but there's so much disparity, that's the same bus system?
Yes.
And 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 one is really not, I mean, it's a sign and that's all. I can't imagine like how you safely approach it and how that could even be, could, could stand from a government entity. When there's not a safe way for somebody to to um, to even approach a bus from that location.
Right, and even to think about, well, I mean, this is unusual weather today, but even recent days of snow and I'm sure that it's not even. I don't know where that person would stand, people would stand if they're standing out there.
Yes, nowhere where the bus would see them, because they wouldn't be close enough.
Right, or either in the road, which is horrible.
Right.
And we've, I mean, we have bus stops that are, I mean, literally on two feet, maybe. Of of concrete, I don't even, I don't want to even call it an island, I mean, it's just. Yeah. It's a glorified curb and I mean, that's equally is unsafe and and not manageable for any, I mean. And I'm currently imagining an able-bodied person trying to navigate either of those kinds of stops and. I, the challenges increase a hundredfold.
Right.
Otherwise, so.
Well, that, in a way, seems like a small enough project to put a priority on to. Have something done.
Yeah. And I know that some of them, um, some of the shelters in some of the communities have been like artistic. So there could be some other sort of flair to them, something that makes them uniquely identifiable as being part of later village would be really cool. Um, and something small to improve the appearance of the community as well.
Love that idea. Um, Mark brought up a good point about um, priorities, so with the implementation strategy, I mean. That first column spilled in, are we intending to fill in the other columns?
Yes.
Excellent.
So I thought we could do that together. And then we can bring it back for final, the final look before we ask for it to be distributed to the reviewing agencies.
Should, should we bring that back up on screen?
The implementation, we can.
The priorities.
Your intent to do it tonight?
Oh, no, no, I meant, okay, not tonight, I meant with Suzie.
Well, is that, I mean, would it also be maybe some planning commission homework that we can do? We've, we've done that before in the surveys, could we do that as? Uh, as maybe some planning commission homework, so it's not just.
Yes.
You and I trying to figure it out, but I mean, I would ultimately really like everyone else's opinion, it is. You live in this lovely community, so.
So, yeah, speaking of, speaking of that, and it goes back to the challenges, I see where we, we try to determine what the priorities from the community are. And we send out surveys and the numbers are so, what I would say incredibly low in terms of that feedback and maybe it's. Maybe it's past survey fatigue and and not seeing enough happening for people to. So people become disinterested in participating, that could be a real issue. But it's hard to almost take that information and say, is this really what the community feels? At times, because there's just, you know, you could have a few outspoken individuals who have something on their mind that. This gives them an opportunity to weigh in, and that's, that's not meant to sound like a negative. Uh, it's, it's just, you know, something that people are passionate about. But we'd like to see more people passionate about it certainly, so that we have a better sense that. That uh, that engagement's there and maybe that, that funnels back to the neighborhood concept and getting people. Um, you know, reinvested, if you will, in the community.
I think so.
So.
But Suzie, to your point, are you asking to send something out to us?
Uh, yes, and and the thought even occurs to me, perhaps if we want to have another um. Piece of public engagement, I mean, we can have, say, these are the strategies we've, the implementation strategies we've identified. Help us prioritize them, could do that too.
It's probably a worthwhile thing to do, I think this last year heads turned things on their head so much that I think perspectives may change. Since the priorities may change.
Well, if you sit on a survey, it'd be nice to uh, at least put our list together and see how it lines up with what the open list to the community would be.
Do ours, do yours first and then, and then open it up.
At least you know that you can get a response from us.
We have to report in.
That's right.
I mean, that's, that's the problem with the, with the surveys, the responses are so low that the, the, what you're seeing is typically meaningless. Because you just have such a low sample size.
Yes, that's true, however, I also have noticed, because this is not just you that, that we find this, but. Um, that there are other communities that have a relatively low turnout. Um, but what we do here, when it's, when we hear it consistent with what we've heard from you all. Then we have a little bit more faith in that.
Right.
Right, so that's a good thing, if we heard, like, you know, twenty-five people said things wildly different from what you're saying. Then we would really wonder where the gap is, but you know, what we do here is very consistent.
Yeah.
Um, and so we just need to think a little bit about this um, surveys, I, I don't. Think just sending out the implementation strategies would really make a, I don't know if it would make sense for everybody, because I don't have the context of the whole plan. Um, so we might want to think about this.
Well, so maybe it is the, I mean, planning commission can obviously, they have the context, we can send them the entire thing and then. Um. We'll see, maybe it's, maybe it's some of the lower, maybe we, we either take the top three or the top or the. You know, the bot- the bottom or the top and kind of help us um, just narrow that.
Once we narrow it down, we narrow it down to like, you know, five or seven things for next year. And here's the planning commission's idea for next year, um, you know, where would you rank these seven things?
Right.
Maybe it's a little bit more focused on that. Okay.
It could do that. Probably be interesting, well, interested in commenting or understanding this is what we focused on last year and what happened. In terms of, I mean, results, things that interfered with results.
The other thing too, to think about is, you know, when we, we think about this neighborhood idea, if that can get some legs to it, that that's something that we can revisit next year, where we say it's time now, we've been through a year, here's what we've done this year in terms of implement, implementing our master plan. This is going to be an MEDC redevelopment-ready communities box to check every year now, is checking your implementation that you've done this every year. So it's going to be something you're going to have to do, which I think is great. But at that point, then maybe we've got a little bit of a structure where we can reach out and say, you know, here's the master plan and hopefully people maybe will have a little more opportunity to be familiar with it and they can help us plan next year's priorities.
My gosh, could this also mean we could have help with our capital improvements plan?
I've been waiting this whole time, I'm like, you guys are talking about everything. And I, it's made this so easy. So now you've touched on a lot of the things, so.
Steered it to a good lead-in for our next item on the agenda.
You know, down to the southeast quadrant park, I mean, it was, it's uncanny, so. As we're wrapping up this conversation, I'd like you to, as you're looking at the implementation matrices, you'll notice that one of the funding mechanisms is the capital improvement action items. So that folds right into what we're talking about and what you guys are going to be looking at next month with the full final draft of the capital improvement plan for the public hearing. So this is awesome that you guys are talking about this and thinking about this, and if you're thinking, well, how does this get paid for? It can absolutely, you know, consider be rolled into the capital improvements plan. I know we have on there the, the study for the, to see if it's feasible to do a park in the southeast quadrant of the city. So that's exactly what we're talking about in the master plan with the neighborhoods. And that's what the parks department is talking about, so you guys are hitting all the points, so, yeah.
It just made Matt's.
Just so easy, so I, I've got a couple of things, I won't spoil everything, but great job, guys.
Okay.
All right, well, as far as what I will do for you is we'll get that survey out to you, hopefully by the end of the week. And then get some, hopefully some quick turnaround from you on that. And then we can get it, hopefully get it out to the community, because I'd love to come back at the next meeting, having finished all that, so then we can send, put the, put a nice little bow on the plan and send it to council and ask council to distribute to the reviewing agencies and to see a Southfield. And then we have a sixty-three day review period, so actually.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is it forty-two, sixty-three, where are we at?
You know what, I'm going to check with the planner at the county because we did that once a couple of years ago and we did a forty-two day because we felt like it was an amendment, that he felt like it was a new plan, so we, we'll just see what he says.
Who are we, all right, I'll talk to you about that.
So either forty-two or sixty-three, but we'll confirm. I think the forty-two is sufficient because I think the plan, I mean, we haven't changed anything in the future land use map. So I do think it's more of an amendment than a wholesale update, so I'm going to go with forty-two. So if we did that in March and council approved it to be released in April, April, May, June, we might have a public hearing at the June meeting or the July meeting at the latest, depending on when those dates fall. And then we can adopt it and start implementing.
Sounds like a plan.
Great.
And then in August, we'll start talking about the CIP again.
Yes.
It just keeps going.
It's a merry-go-round.
All connected is what we're saying here. Anything else for me on this topic?
Jill, I just wanted to comment on, I know there's a lot of information, a lot of pulling things together in, in the documentation here. And I know you mentioned it was a draft.
If you have.
Somewhere in, yeah, somewhere in here I saw a reference to Madison Heights.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so I'm sure it was in the, in the broad, I think it was in the broad context of, of.
We'll make sure.
Like the weather and, and, and climate change and.
Oh, that might be.
Some statistics, so I'm sure there's some, yeah, that much larger or global or more regional information that applies, that's probably.
I found it, it's in that resiliency chapter, I'll take care of that, thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else that you have that are typo-related in nature, you can send those to Suzie or you can just send them to me, that's fine.
That's fine. Yeah, I didn't mean to like, public call out.
Thanks.
So, yeah. Okay.
But see, now I know you read it, so.
Yes.
Well then, can I give you my typo too?
Yes, go ahead.
No, I'll email it to you.
All right.
Yeah, I probably, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the capital improvements plan discussion. So I think Matt is just chomping at the bit.
You know, you guys, like I said, you're hitting a lot of the stuff that I wanted to talk about. And so it's, it's great that, where you know, this is actually going on at the same time so that we can really see the connection between the master plan and the, you know, how that feeds other, other plans and how, really how it gets funded, how it gets implemented. And a lot of the items that you guys talked about are on the current, we're in previous capital improvement plans and are included in the, the one that you guys are going to be hopefully adopting this year. So with that, I have a short PowerPoint that I'd like to go over. So I'm just going to run through this really quickly, it's the same thing that basically summarizing the first few pages of the plan that you guys got. Kind of talking about what the capital improvement plan is, what, what the projects are, why we do this. So we've gone over this every year, you guys have seen it, so I don't want to be a, a broken record. I know there are some new members here, so I won't completely skip over it. But, so we'll, we'll run through that, we'll, we'll review the, the current project log. And then the final thing that I, I want to go over after that is directing you, everyone, to kind of go click around on the online map, that's the, the capital improvement plan, the digital portal. You guys are one of the first communities that we set this up for and we, we update it every year. So it's a really cool tool to kind of see where these improvements are, where they're planned, where things aren't being planned, and just to sort of see where projects overlap. And it's a little, I guess, you know, more interactive way than just reading a bunch of project descriptions and, and spreadsheets. So those are the couple of things we're going to walk through and I'll get started here. So. Let me see, this should be of, can everyone see this presentation right now?
Not yet.
Not yet.
It's taken over all my screen share.
There it is.
There we go. So at the end of this, and then like, as I said, the, we'll go over the projects and then, once we, we're still waiting on a few numbers to be finalized with the sewer and water, so that's why some of the project descriptions weren't updated. So once that's updated, we'll be sent out to you, but we're hoping to have the public hearing set for the March Planning Commission meeting. So this is a general overview of the process. You know, as we've talked about before, this serves as, as a multi-year, it looks out on a six-year horizon over a variety of departments that deal with everything from maintenance needs to infrastructure and, you know, parks, parks and rec, and then implementing master plan goals as we talked about. So, and this is, on this slide real quick, it's required by the Michigan Planning Enabling Act and it's actually a duty of the planning commission, so it's very tied to the planning process. So a couple, some examples, we talked about of capital improvement projects, you know, as we know, construction of a new police station, which we like to put in here because that's one of the items that's been discussed and is actually, we want to, is just getting a little momentum and moving towards a study at least. Extension of water and sewer lines, we see that a lot, purchase of patrol car. So these are a lot of things that we see in the, the Lathir Village capital improvement.
Hey Matt, are you advancing your slides?
Yeah.
Because I only still see your, like, the PowerPoint thing, so I just.
Wonderful.
Had that happened before too.
Okay, let's see here, let's try that again.
Oh, we are, we can see the CIP overview slide now.
Yep, jumped to four.
I closed it.
Yeah, it's still the, like, it's not the slideshow, it's just your, the part where you're creating.
You're right, we've got your desktop.
I mean, you could just keep doing it that way, I guess.
It's, it's on my other, I have two other screens and it's on both of those. So presenting.
Opened twice.
Okay. Sorry about this, stop sharing. Let's see. Still nothing, huh?
No.
That's really shit. All right, well, I'm just going to continue on here, you guys can see this one?
No.
No, stop sharing, so you need to, yeah.
I think it's the, like, all the extra monitors, because I had this happen recently myself. I switched to doing them in power, in PDF format because I don't have to worry about that.
That may have been a good idea.
I should have told you that before, sorry.
Share, thanks. How's that?
Perfect.
I think you're there.
Okay, I unplugged all the, everything else, too much technology. Too much, all right. So as I was mentioning, I was talking about the, the capital improvement projects, what the policy is for the city of Lathir Village. So I think this is going to be, again, important as you're thinking about those master plan implementation items. That, this is a detailed description, you know, that it has a useful life of more than three years, costs more than five dollar, or five thousand dollars. It does not reoccur annually. And, and those types of expenses, so again, that, that's laid out in the, the plan, but I think that's going to be important to think about as you're, you're considering what can be included in a capital improvement budget. So going over some of the benefits here, improving eligibility for state and federal grants. So this is something that I wanted to mention when you guys, when there was the discussion about the bus stops. So this is particularly bus stops and, and parks are the, a really good example that having identified a park in your master plan or the need for a park, identifying that in your capital improvements plan and budgeting for it really sets the community up for grant opportunities to get quite a bit of funding is given out for parks acquisition and those types of things. So the city's been successful with that before, but, so identifying bus stops in the master plan and then potentially carrying that over as a DDA study item or, you know, implementation item, and next, you know, maybe a next year CIP, if that's, if, once the plan is adopted, are definitely ways to think about, well, how do we start budgeting for that? Well, it's, it's right here and the CIP is a great place to, to document that. So, and then I have this transparency and identification of high priority projects. So that's talking about the, the website that we, as I said, it's like the GIS portal shows all the projects, all the budgets and information and it's out there for everybody to see so that it's hopefully as transparent as possible. And then the last one there, the map, all that'll hit, the map really highlights the coordination of cost sharing between projects. If you see a number of projects in a certain area, sometimes it's easier to line those up in the same year so that you're not ripping a street out after it was just repaved. So here's a slide, so this is the, the role of the planning commission. So going over what you guys are, it's, it's your role to update the city's CIP and comprehensive plan. So again, great that we're doing this in the same meeting and having this discussion. So these are just a few of the, you know, bullet points here about what, what your guys' role is and that's really what you're doing today is looking at these plans, lining these things up, going out in the community, talking to your neighborhood, you know, thinking about ways to get the neighborhood engaged. So this is, again, a great example. So here's a, a quick timeline just to see, you know, we, we started this back last year in, in December, we met with the CIP Subcommittee, which I'm not sure I know Commissioner Hammond is on that, he's not here today. I think Bruce, you're on that as well, are you, I can't recall if you participated on that or not, I know you.
I, I did, I'm, I'm kind of driving, driving the capital improvement bond, but.
So, yes, I, I know we always say, you're always in the discussion, so.
Good or bad?
For better or worse, Bruce is. So yeah, anyway, we met, we discussed these projects with that group back in December. And then, again, we, you know, we're kind of at that draft capital improvement plan, we have our draft list of projects for you. Looking to set the public hearing in March. So you guys, that would be one month from today, March sixteenth, would be the public hearing. And then if, if you recommend that gets forwarded on to city council for adoption, that would still give us a nice month to review if there's anything that's coming up in the master plan discussion that should really be included, there's still time for that. And then that gives us, that is perfect timing and lines up for the city council's adoption budget in late April, early May is right when they're having their fiscal year discussions. Well, they're going on right now, but that's when they're finalized. So with that said, this is a few of the policy documents that, you know, we, we, we look at when we consider the CIP, the comprehensive plan, we look at past CIPs and budgets. There's, you'll notice in the funding sources, a lot of there, there's a lot of bond, bond review or funds. So this is the kind of place to, to really identify all that and lay it out. So again, this is another important slide to consider as, you know, these program areas, as you're looking at the master plan, these are all areas that kind of touch, you know, that you could, you could possibly address that have a lot of crossover with that comprehensive plan. So this is the draft list of projects that was, should have been shared with you. It's largely a lot of the projects from the previous plan, there's a few new ones in here that don't have descriptions yet, the one that I'll would direct your attention to, the DDA, the alley study, the, for the feasibility and condition, that's one that we're still working on the, looking at the, the condition of all the, the alleys and what it might take to, to replace that. Don't want to say too much, I know Suzie is, has a little more knowledge on that one. If there's any specific questions, but this is just a general, you know, list again, if there's any questions, we're happy to answer specific ones, but there's nothing really too crazy in here, too, too different from past CIPs. So, and before we ask any questions, I would say that the twenty twenty CIP, all those projects are all still live on the dashboard that I'm going to show you. So a lot of these project descriptions are available on the link that I'm going to show you. So again, just the, the water and sewer ones, the water and sewer have a few update, few updates that'll be changed related to the funding source, but nothing too major. I'm going to go back one slide, so these green ones are the ongoing projects, things that have been happening in past years and will continue to happen, so we've identified that. So. Is there any questions on a specific project here that, that stuck out? Like I said, there was nothing really largely changed from previous years, but I didn't know if there was anything from the city side even that was missing, I know we've been looking at it, but. So if, if there is, if anyone sees it, sees anything, feel free to send those comments along to myself or with your master plan comments as well. with your master plan comments as well. So with that, I would really like to get away from the spreadsheets and slides since I'm sure we've all had enough of that and show you the project map that basically maps all of this information. So I am going to share this one now. If we can all see, everybody see the dashboard now? Great. So this is all of those projects that you just saw or most of those projects that you just saw on that spreadsheet, put into a much more colorful and fun and informative format that shows you. So if I zoom out a little bit here, this is a map of the entire city. And these are all color coded. So starting on the right side, we have our administrative DPS. So all those departments that I showed you. So this basically lays out and maps out where all of these improvements are being proposed in some fashion or another. So for instance, this large green square down here, again, you guys were hitting on all my examples. I'm gonna show that off. Talks about the potential acquisition and development of a southeastern quadrant park. So this is a good example of how that you know, gets brought up in either a parks and rec survey or a public meeting or something. And, you know, the parks director recommended and had, had heard enough comments that and identified this need. So this is a, a good way to identify that. And I just wanted to, again, highlight, you know, that's kind of how the, how we get the first, the ball rolling on that, if you will. So some of the other things, you know, looking at the, the source. So this is kind of highlighting the DDA district when I click on this one, talking about the light poles. Is this, this is the, oh, this is the bus stop improvement. So we've highlighted that, you know, the bus stop improvements are needed along Southfield Road here. And that, you know, there should be some, some study for that. So I'm, I'm gonna share this link and make sure everybody has it. I'm gonna share it in the chat here. So in case anybody wants to click it, click around for a few minutes after this and I'll make sure that it's in the information that's all sent out. But you can kind of look at how the, the budget is allocated across department. A funding source. You'll notice the bottom bar changing here and how it alters over fiscal year. So, and again, this is all tied to that spreadsheet. It's just mapped in a little more interactive way. So that is my little presentation about the capital improvement plan. And as I said, the draft log that you all have in front of you is what's largely gonna be considered for the the, the public hearing in March, should you choose to set that tonight.
Map, Matt, one question about the map. So the, the map from the last year is on the planning commission's page now. So is that the map that's going to get updated once we're finished with this? Or are we gonna need to do something?
I, it's gonna, it can be updated, you know. They, as soon as it's updated, the, either tomorrow, I can update it to base, be based on those project logs. I was waiting to get a little bit of financial information so that we only did it once, hopefully.
Right on.
Only twice. Yes.
Just wanted to make sure.
Absolutely, yeah.
And I am just gonna reiterate Matt's comment about the setting the public hearing. We do have we do have a, kind of like a, a budget calendar that we're working with administration wise. And so to help us stay on track, it would be ideal for you to set the public hearing this evening for our March 16th agenda. So we can get that on to council.
Hey. Is there any, any, any reasons or objections or from anyone on the commission at that point about setting up the, if not, we'll entertain a a motion to set up the public hearing for March.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for the capital improvement plan on March 15th. Is it Suzie?
Sixteen.
16th at the March 16th meeting to 2021.
Second. Those in favor? Roll call.
Board member Cantor.
Yes.
Sheriff Yatrowski.
Yes.
Board member Stansberry.
Hi.
Board member Thompson.
Yes.
And board member Fines. I'm sorry.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you all for that. Matt, we'll see you then too, huh?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Excellent.
Okay, we'll move on then. Old business tabled items. We have none this evening. Any other matters for discussion? By anyone on the commission? Hearing none. Let's go on to general communication and legal update.
For me tonight.
Okay.
Well, I will share. We've got a planning and zoning essentials class that we're teaching through Michigan Association of Planning March 3rd and 4th. And I will send along the link to registration in case anybody's interested in attending.
Are, are those evening or is that during the day or what?
There are two evening sessions. I think they go from 5:30 to, let me tell you here. 5:30 to 7:30. On, one is Wednesday, the third, and then part two is Thursday, the fourth. They would normally be like one, three hour session. But because it's remote and people are like this, two hours is your max. So split into two nights. So I'm, I'm Wednesday, the third, and Rotoroyo is Thursday, the fourth.
Okay. Thank you, Jill.
I don't really have much that I'm gonna, I think we've, we've talked quite a bit. And, but I will tell you, we are, DDA is doing fireside Fridays. 11 to 1, Pavilion. Be there, be squared. Just don't be there this Friday because we're not gonna be able to do it this Friday, but come next week. It's not quite the block captain idea, but we do want to get people out, get to know you. Bring some lunch and, and hang out and talk to Corey and I and learn about what we're gonna, what's going on. So and we are gonna be doing some. We did get the DDA to get a, a grant for some restaurant, specific restaurant relief money from Oakland County for their latest rounds. So we've got some more assistance coming their way. And so we're really excited about that, actually, to be able to provide at least a little bit of assistance. So.
Okay, good. Do we, have we received feedback on how our restaurants have fared through this or our food service?
They're doing pretty decent. For example, Bilton, Bilton Brewed in Detroit, our coffee, our little coffee spot that's in Michigan first, they're doing fabulous. They actually we reached out, you know, we have eight restaurants, right? So we reached out to all of them before we did our application and they declined any assistance or like, we've been doing really well. We'd prefer to have let others take what, you know, use the funding that, that may be available to us. So they declined their funding. You know, the others are doing okay for carryout and we're still exploring some other options for how we may be able to assist them. We're planning right now to do a reimbursement, but we're also Corey's looking into some grants for technology and how can we improve their online ordering platforms and, and different mechanisms for that. So they seem to be doing okay though.
Okay. Thanks for that. Okay, if nothing else, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
I think we're all in favor, but.
You don't need a roll, you don't need a roll.
You don't need a roll call. Okay, thank you, everybody. See everyone again. Hey.
I will. Good night, buddy.